I will call the meeting to order. This is the July 21st meeting of the Yellow Springs Village Council. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Wintrae.
Here.
Asflund.
Yes, Sims.
Here.
Housh.
Here.
McQueen.
Here.
Also present are Village Manager Patty Bates, Finance Director Nancy Danzian, Zoning Administrator Stephen Anderson, and Tamara Ennis, I believe, is here as well. Supervisor Streets and Parks Jason Hamby, Electric Supervisor Johnny Burns, and Village Solicitor Chris Conner. We also have a few members of Planning Commission here. Bill Webco is here. Phil is here. Anyone else?
John.
John Strohing.
Oh, John Strohing is here. I believe that covers it.
Great, thank you. Do we have any announcements?
Actually, I have one. August is Block Parties Month, and so if you haven't seen the announcement in the paper, we are looking for citizens to host block parties. The way to sort of schedule that through the HRC is with our email, which is HRC, and the ending is the same as all the other village emails, vil yellow springs dot O H dot U S. We're trying to get that all settled in the next week or so, so that we can put the word out. So, it should be fun.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the village staff, even though they didn't work, they made me work by providing material for our soccer thing that we had over the weekend, and I hope the community also enjoyed and benefited from it.
And also, the bike race that happened on Saturday was actually quite well-attended. There were 250 racers. We had local people win. Dave Linden was the winner in his age group for the men, and Melissa Heston came in second for women in her age group. So, we were very well-represented, and the village crews and the township folks did really well. It was a very well-organized event, so I hope it is actually something that we will see in Yellow Springs again. One other thing I forgot to mention is to please turn off your cellphones, and we do take public comment, but it will only be when you're recognized by the chair. So, try to keep, there's a lot of people here, so just try to keep the, no conversation other than what's in the meeting. Next is a review of the minutes of the July 7th meeting. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Nine. And I don't think, I guess that's it. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we'll do a review of the agenda. You see that things are slightly different. We're hearing the appeal of the Planning Commission decision from July 23rd. That will be first on the agenda, and then we'll do petitions and communications and move into the rest of our regular agenda. Is there anything besides the hearing, is there anything that anybody sees that they would like to change, or move, or add?
We will be dealing with the petition.
Yes, that will be after, that will actually come after. Chris will speak to that after we have the hearing.
Okay.
Anything else? So, we are now opening the hearing. This is a hearing of the Planning Commission decision of June 23rd that granted Antioch College a conditional use permit to install a 1-megawatt solar array. And just to be clear about what we're doing here, Village Council is not making a decision on the solar array. That decision is only Planning Commission's. What council will be doing tonight is hearing from the appellants, and hearing from the applicant, hearing from Antioch College, to decide if there were procedural inadequacies in the hearing, in the two Planning Commission hearings, which we will then, would then, we have two choices at the end of this hearing, that we will affirm the decision of Planning Commission, or we will rescind it back to Planning Commission for another decision. We will explain why we are doing that, what we felt was inadequate about the procedure. So, that's really the choice. Just to be clear, I have realized today that there are a lot of people that think that council is making a decision on the solar array, and that is not the case. So, we do have, we've heard from the appellants. They are represented. I believe that there are seven folks here, and we have agreed to give them three minutes each, and we'll begin with whoever.
Well, our presentation is, well, we've reserved three minutes for rebuttal from the, one of the persons who didn't come. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Laura Curlis, and I reside at 110 Curt Street, Yellow Springs, Ohio. Appellants are asking you to remand the June 23rd decision of the Planning Commission granting the conditional use request of solar power and light in Antioch College to install a five-acre solar array surrounded by an eight-foot chain-link fence on land adjacent to the Glen and residential areas. The Village Council's authority to review the Planning Commission's decision is broad and includes a review of the basis or absence thereof for the decision. According to 1276.03B7A, procedural inadequacy shall be broadly construed to include a failure to adequately consider an important argument, or a failure to follow proper procedures so that all participants may have a fair and impartial hearing. On June 23rd, Planning Commission approved the revised site plan and required only three changes. The only substantive condition was to provide screening on the western edge of the solar array to be approved by staff. A suggested requirement for buffering around the transformer was struck. The vegetative screening requirement was left vague despite Commissioner Strohing's request for a concrete plan. The screening requirement lacks specificity regarding who is responsible to install the vegetation or trees, who pays for them, the number of species, the timeline for installation as required by 127003. The only thing specified is the general sighting of the vegetation, which shows vegetative screening on the eastern side as well as the west. In short, the requirement for vegetative screening was not adequately specified, left the decision to staff, and is therefore procedurally inadequate. When addressing 126203 general conditions, Planning Commission determined that the conditions were met, but we challenge the reasoning. If any one condition is lacking, the proposal shall not be approved. Appellants have stated that several of these provisions have not been met. 126203C requires compatibility with the general vicinity. Three commission members believe that the general vicinity is an educational purpose. One commissioner stated that the large solar array is not necessarily compatible with the general vicinity. The majority of the commissions stated they considered the general vicinity to be the educational district, failing to adequately consider the RA and conservation districts surrounding the site. As the array on the roof of North College Hall shows, a large-scale solar array is not necessary to educate persons about solar energy. This facility is, let's be clear, commercial, industrial in scale, and is not compatible with the general vicinity. It was also procedurally inadequate that the commission did not consider suggestion by the zoning administrator to reduce the visual impact of the fencing by lowering the height from eight to six feet. The commission instead increased the cost and incompatibility. Thank you. I will let others take it from there. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next, oh, please state your names also, and your address list.
Phil Kane, 1350 Rice Road. We're not questioning the goodwill or the integrity of the Planning Commission. We are questioning their reasoning in this matter, their failure to adequately consider important arguments, and the procedure which did not permit follow-up questions and comments. Regarding the suitability and compatibility of the proposed solar installation with the neighborhood and 84-year history of the use of the land in question, the Planning Commission used the presence across Cory Street, across the bike path, several hundred feet north and east of the proposed site of the former college power plant, as evidence that the neighborhood had a history of industrial use, and that therefore the solar installation was compatible with and suitable to the neighborhood. However, the power plant with smokestack featured prominently in Antioch's proposal has never been associated with the golf course land, either functionally or conceptually, and is not even visible from the five acres, six months a year, as large trees both west and east of Cory Street block the view. The smokestack itself is an artifact that has been dormant for many decades. The neighborhood is distinctly non-industrial, characterized by the remainder of the golf course, that is to say, open fields, the bicycle path, the women's park, Glen Helen, the Antioch school and grounds, and the residences to the south and west. At the hearing, there was no provision for stating these points to counter the commission's assertion that the extant power plant building trumped the rural character of the neighborhood, and therefore made the solar installation compatible. The Planning Commission did not adequately consider the neighborhood compatibility and suitability issue. Another issue that was inadequately analyzed was that of open space preservation. The village comprehensive land use plan specifically designates the Antioch Golf Course as land to preserve as open space. The commission treated this directive as conflicted with other language in the plan calling for promotion of green energy, but this is a false dichotomy. Placing a solar installation elsewhere under the auspices of the village or college would both preserve this precious open space and promote green energy. This point was not addressed, nor were questions about it permitted. The commission also did not consider the actual increase in village green energy sourcing to be derived from the proposed solar installation. By 2016, the village will be obtaining 84% of its electricity from green sources. Assuming the college is 10% of the total village electricity, with the proposed solar installation, the 84% becomes 85.6%. If the college uses 20% of the total, the 84% becomes 87.2%. These small incremental gains do not justify the destruction of five acres of designated open space. This basic point was not discussed, nor these numbers analyzed. For these and other reasons, Planning Commission did not meet the criterion of procedural adequacy. We ask that Antioch College's petition for a conditional use permit be remanded to the commission. Thank you.
I do want to say one thing, not to you, but to council, that you, we can't ask questions during this process, if you're interested.
Can.
Can, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, the next appellant, who was used to speak?
My name is Lauren Miller. I live at 1117 Livermore Street. I respectfully ask you to take another look at the process we as a village have had concerning the solar array projects later for installation on Antioch's golf course open space. I acknowledge Antioch College's property rights, and we all want Antioch to succeed. But even the generously-written, updated zoning code has restrictions and conditions to protect the surrounding areas from non-compatible land usage. I will illustrate numerous examples of statements that indicate the lack of fairness and impartiality by individuals involved in the evaluation and decision-making of this project. Copies of these documents are now being given to Judy Kitner, Clerk of the Council.
Chris, can we accept these?
Were these part of the record that was originally presented to the Planning Commission?
Yes, I was going to speak to that, the next paragraph. I do not hold malice towards these individuals, as I believe their intent was honorable, and perhaps even overly enthusiastic. After I read the Energy Board's meeting minutes dated May 13th, 2014, which documented a caution, quote, "that the board needed to be more aware of the sunshine law when emailing each other between meetings," unquote, I became especially concerned about the lack of fairness and impartiality, and made a public records request. There was undue influence in the process because of participation of Brent Henderson, Director of the Project Development for Solar Power and Light, in both developing the Antioch Solar Project and in his role as Energy Board member. Here are excerpts from various Energy Board members to each other, to a council member, to Antioch College, showing the Energy Board's advocacy for the project from the start, and to the Planning Commission to approve the conditional use application for the solar array prior to a public meeting, public hearing. On 1115, 2013, Brent Henderson to Eric Johnson, "Many projects die in the zoning stage. It is important to make the project as beneficial to the community as possible, and to educate the community about solar's benefits. There will be certainly some opposition from the villagers who feel the golf course should remain an open nature preserve and walking path. This is just another obstacle we have to overcome in the process of developing large-scale solar projects." On January 12th, 2014, Brent Henderson to Jerry Papania, and this was CC to Rick Walkie, Eric Johnson, Dan Rudolph, and Mary Ann McQueen. I invited Reggie Stratton to come in and discuss Antioch Solar's plans and resistance the college is getting from a neighborhood coalition to stop all development on the, quote, "old golf course," unquote, where the cellular site would be cited. As a side note, YSOC, Yellow Springs Open Space Coalition, nor I were ever solicited to attend an Energy Board meeting. On 430, 2014, Mary Ann McQueen wrote, and CC, Rick, Jerry, Eric, and Dan. Do I need to continue?
Finish that.
It is my understanding that as individuals on the Energy Board, we support Antioch's proposed solar array. I think we'll, we've discussed our support as the Energy Board as well. My question involves whether we want to express our support as the Energy Board, both as Planning Commission and at the upcoming energy, excuse me, upcoming Antioch meeting. Clearly, Brett would have to recuse himself from this type of support statement if we were to make that. Since Brett is on the Energy Board, it may also have the appearance of the Energy Board being too closely aligned to the solar project."
That, that will be it.
Okay. I would like to hand down the rest of my speech.
We.
Well, we've got two parts. This is, information is part of this hearing, this record, which is separate distinct, so we can accept it for that purpose.
Okay. But we can't consider it.
It's not, but it's not part of the record from the Planning Commission. The fact that the Energy Board made a recommendation is, and I think you can make comments about that relationship, but additional documents, no, not part of, not part of the record from the Planning Commission.
May I finish?
How much longer do you think it is, Lauren?
Another minute and a half, tops.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I can tell you, my husband's not going to speak. Thank you. 430, 14, Eric Johnson wrote, "We need to avoid having these email discussions due to sunshine law." On 330, 14, Mary Ann McQueen wrote, "The Energy Board is a commission of the council, and as such, needs to follow the sunshine law. Sorry that I forgot that. Individual Energy Board members can talk one-on-one about issues of concern to the Board, but we cannot deliberate as a group outside a publicly called meeting." On 55, 14, Dan Rudolph to Brent Henderson, "Hi Brent, so here's my draft of the letter. Let me know if you have any comments. Could you help with the percentage of total yearly energy budget numbers?" So, the total usage of the village for the last three, for the last year was 31,000 megawatt hours from Yellow Springs News article. Thanks. 55, 14, Brent to Dan, "Thanks for sharing the letter. It looks great. I added my input. If you go to the review tab in Word, you can review track changes and see my comments in red. You can show final review to get rid of red lines, or you can just type my comments in the version you already have." 514, 14, Brent Henderson to Rick Walkie. After, and this is after he recused himself from discussing the recommending letter and making substantive comments about the letter from the Energy Board to the Yellow Springs News to advocate for the project. "Hi Rick, I understand the protocol. Am I allowed to, I am allowed to communicate one-on-one with a fellow Board member via email? I am allowed to comment at all on this letter? I am unsure, because I was asked to leave during the discussion of it. I think the letter is great, but does one, but does leave one opinion unspoken, the impact the system will have on the village? I think the letter from the Board to the public would include a position the Board took on this ordinance and why." 515, 2014, Rick to Brent, "Hi Brent, we can talk. You and I don't constitute a quorum, and by the way, you weren't asked to leave. We can't make that request. That responsibility is yours. Each member must decide whether their participation might be perceived as being in conflict, i.e. whether they may, whether they may deciding on an issue which benefits them directly. I prefer to be overly cautious, as the integrity of the whole community is at stake." 65, 14, memo from the village solicitor to Ken Bristol. While it may be true, as Lauren and Mr. Bentine of AMP point out, the excessive solar production of not meeting its obligation with Ant, the village cannot deny this pending conditional use application. We believe that the Planning Commission can deny it if all the general conditions are not met. Email between Brent and Rick on 66, 14, Brent to Rick, "Thanks for your synopsis and subtle coaching of the situation." Rick responds, "Your participation completes the, quote, 'team,' unquote. I hope planning won't get bogged down in discussions about the economic implications of competing power generation affecting long-term village power purchase agreements. As you know, the Energy Board discusses this issue at link with our van manager and consultant when creating interconnect ordinance language permitting as local renewable power generation." 66, 14, Rick Walkie to all, "Hi all. Next meetings, next Monday night's meeting, Planning Commission meeting, will hear Antioch's request to put a solar installation on their field. Reggie Stratton has asked the Energy Board to be present in support of their project." 66, 14, Brent Henderson to Rick Walkie, "Thanks for your synopsis and subtle coaching of the situation. When I'm confronted with the messages in these and other emails, I must acknowledge that I do not feel proper procedure was followed, and so that all participants had a reasonable opportunity to a fair and impartial panel. The Village Council must remand the Planning Commission's decision back and ensure that the citizens and the village get a fair and impartial hearing on this matter. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
Counsel, if I can clarify, under 127603, four, it says that Village Council shall not solicit or allow additional evidence or testimony, but shall base its deliberations on the record of the subordinate hearings, except that council may question any of the parties represented in the record. So, any extraneous material, the emails are not, shouldn't be considered by council, because it's not part of the original record. However, to the extent that there's a challenge to the process by which the fact that the Energy Board made a recommendation, and what influence it may have had, that is part of the record, because Energy Board made its position known publicly, and is part of the record from the Planning Commission. So, some of the comments have relevance to that, as it pertains to what the standards would be for procedural inadequacy, and whether or not the recommendation of an ancillary board of the village would have had an impact on the Planning Commission to make that decision unfair, or a partial decision by Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a question to you. It seems like there are a couple, at least a couple of things going on. There were emails that were going back and forth among Energy Board members, which, according to the, I'm not sure whether they should have happened or not, but at least they were public record. And then there was the Energy Board's recommendation in support of the solar. Those are, so those are two different things. And then I guess there's maybe a third, an implication that the fact that Energy Board members were talking to each other, I don't know, somehow influenced the Planning Board Commission's decision. But I, so I guess my question is, is it, or is it not appropriate for the Energy Board to make a recommendation to Planning Commission? Is there anything wrong with that?
My understanding of the appointments to the Energy Commission is that what their, the Energy Board is to make recommendations to study the use of energy within the village, but that they have no decision-making authority. They're merely a body that can make a recommendation or give advice, but that carries no weight with the body that makes the decision. In this case, it would be the Planning Commission, or it could be the VZA at some point, or it could be council, that their decision is simply, or pardon me, their recommendation is something that is advisory-only, and, and the deliberating body, again, in this case, gives it what weight it is due, which may have been none, it may have been a lot, I don't know.
I guess the other thing, though, is that one of the Energy Board members was also on the company that's doing the solar project.
And I don't think that that was a hidden fact to anybody within the village.
Yeah, it was discussed at the meeting.
And Chris, I don't know if this is pertinent, but I don't believe either body, I do not believe that Planning Commission asked for that opinion, that it was not a solicited opinion, it was given by, by the Energy Board.
And then, what council will need to do today during its deliberative portion of, once the hearing is closed, is make a determination based upon the record if council sees that there's any evidence that the action of the Energy Board somehow made the hearing before the Planning Commission unfair, or created some bias that would have impacted due process.
Okay, thank you. Appellants, the next person.
As our senior hall wants, they have things that make you go, hmm. My name is Stephen Rose Senior. The review of the Antioch Solar Array Site Plan conducted by the Planning Commission did not even begin to take in consideration the sentiments and desires of the village Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which delineates the golf course as an open space that adds to the quality of life within the village. As a result, the proposed site plan fails to meet the requirement that it be designed in a manner that is harmonious with the character of the surrounding area. The main reason it fails to do so is because it would diminish a part of one of our designated open spaces, namely, the golf course. The Village Council and Antioch College have a vital role to play in the preservation of existing open spaces, especially the ones that are associated with it, with the campus as outlined in the plan. And according to the village vision statements, any future developments within Yellow Springs must respect and reinforce the village's character. The vision statements also says that the natural environment strengthens the physical character of the village. This means that when development takes place, it needs to behave in a manner that respects the essential physical character of the village, including in a historical context. Allowing a solar array or any other man-made structure to be placed on the golf course would be a violation of the historical context, and in direct contradiction to the wishes of the village electorate. The Planning Commission failed to take these extremely important factors into consideration when deliberating this issue. The visioning statements in the comprehensive plan are in agreement when it comes to the importance of protecting the village's open spaces. They explicitly require the continued preservation of open spaces throughout the village. We implore the Village Council to strive to uphold what we, the people, have stated as our will, which is to keep the open spaces within the village open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Jalen Jones-Roe, and that was the first time that I heard those comments in regards to the emails, and I didn't hear that there were recommendations, I heard the word "coaching," which made me pause. I have been respectfully before this council on many occasions regarding issues that I have deep, that have deeply touched me and have impacted our village. I have stood for the CBE, the Senior Levy, and I stand for Antioch College, but I'm vehemently against the Planning Commission's decision to allow solar array on the golf course. I am asking that this elected council remand the decision on two bases as to why this fenced solar structure project should be repealed. First, the question, is the solar use on this land incompatible to the neighborhood, was never answered. There has been no evidence or argument that shows that the power source of this kind, with high visibility and obstruction, could possibly be compatible. Mr. Till, Mr. Till's argument that a 40-year-old coal-burning furnace that wasn't even located on the golf course open space is proof that a solar array would be compatible in this 100-year-old neighborhood is absurd. That power plant was not compatible to the neighborhood or the village even then, but at least it was tucked away, not taking away valuable open space. Counsel, this question must be addressed, proven, and satisfied before rendering a decision. If it were candidly asked, the answer would be yes, it is incompatible. The second reason that council should remand the decision is that Planning Commission failed to consider one of Yellow Springs' core values, and that is to preserve the open space that is within the city limits of the village. The Antioch Golf Course is actually named in our visioning statement as one of the few spaces left that meets the village open space criteria. One Plant, Planning Commission has, our, our Planning Commission has a directive to protect the open space quality of Yellow Springs, and that was not done when this decision was made. Planning Commission member John Strohing himself stated that he struggles with this issue, using open, uh, open space for this project. issue using open space for this project. Karen, keeping open space in this plan is a plan for Yellow Springs. And I say to each of you, Jerry, Brian, all of you, every member of this council, I say as an individual and as a group, we must fight to keep open space open because, once it's gone, it's gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Laura Ellison, I live at 120 Kirk Street. I do not feel that the Planning Commission adequately considered the impact on me as a property owner, voter, and taxpayer. I have noted flaws in the process that include but are not limited to ambiguity in the language used in discussions, language such as "no more than necessary," "not limited to," "limited to," "as much as possible," "as little as possible." These are not measurable or observable and therefore do not answer questions or give adequate information. Two members of the Planning Commission were texting or otherwise engaged with cellular phones during the meeting. The visual sound screen that was suggested was left up to village staff. What will be put in and when? We need something observable and measurable. Ambiguity does not allow the surrounding neighbors to have any confidence in what will be done or how it will be maintained. In fact, it has the opposite effect. The informal sound study did not consider topography. I feel that there were flaws in the examination of whether or not the installation of an industrial solar array is compatible with the surrounding area. My reasons include but are not limited to only Antioch College was mentioned. There are six property owners who pay taxes. An industrial installation does not belong in a neighborhood adjacent to an elementary school. Yellow Springs Village Comprehensive Plan calls for the preservation of open space within the village and explicitly lists the Antioch College Golf Course as part of what needs to be preserved as open space. It does not say until something better comes along. The mention of open space and alternative energy in the same document does not constitute competing language unless one is sacrificed for the other. We are sacrificing green space for green energy. A supporting document offered by the college and Solar Power and Light outlines the use of disturbed land for such installations.
Thank you. Next appellate.
My name is Mike Kelly, I also live at 120 Kirk Street. The proposed solar array is a large project with a lot of moving pieces. The Planning Commission was given a huge task to consider and decide on all the ramifications and possible unintentional consequences of the project. During this deliberation, I believe too little consideration was given to two areas in particular. The first piece is the effect the proposal will have on stormwater drainage. Much of the golf course lies in karst topography. Karst topography is full of solution channels and sinkholes. Groundwater and stormwater behaves differently in karst than it does in less fragile environments. The swale directly in the path of the solar array installation is vital to stormwater flow for the entire neighborhood to the west of the golf course. The sinkholes in the golf course are obviously a growing problem already since Antioch College has repeatedly filled these holes with dump truck loads of gravel and filter on several occasions. The approval process was procedurally inadequate since there was no independent stormwater study completed or required. The analysis conducted by John Eastman and accepted by the Planning Commission was inadequate and solely based on documents provided by the petitioner, Antioch College and Solar Power and Light. There was no study made specific to the site. There were no requirements made to monitor stormwater flow and sinkhole development or measures required to mitigate potential effects. What effect will the filling of the sinkholes and the fencing of the swale have on stormwater drainage on the residential properties adjacent to and near the golf course? The fencing of the swale may not affect stormwater directly with buildup debris, but what effect will it have on sinkholes? What effect will these changes have on groundwater flow? What effect will the disruption of drainage patterns have on the land? I hope that you will remand this project back to Planning Commission due to the inadequate stormwater and groundwater study and also due to the non-existent requirement to monitor the effects of the proposed solar array on stormwater and groundwater. Secondly, the approval does not include a plan or a bond secured by Solar Power and Light to ensure the safe removal of the solar panels and the solar panel structures if Antioch College goes out of business or if the panels are no longer functioning. If either of these unfortunate events happens, who will pay to remove the structures? Will village residents be left footing the bill to clean up the unwanted or unused structures? The approval process was inadequate in that it did not require a plan for removal or a bond to ensure the safe removal of the solar array. I ask that you remand the decision back to the Planning Commission so that they may adequately consider and study these important issues that could potentially impact the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for the appellants until the rebuttal?
Yes. Three more.
Because one person did give up their time, so, okay.
My name is Chad Stiles, I live at 1425 Corey Street, and I have a brief statement. I ask for a remand of the current solar array plan so the Planning Commission can adequately consider the importance of open space as described by the official visioning and land use documents set forth by this village. This was an issue given very little discussion in Planning Commission's meeting about the solar array. And of the many letters from villagers expressing concern about the loss of open space, not one was discussed by Planning Commission during its meetings. It is clear from the language in the Yellow Springs Visioning Statement and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that open space in general and the golf course specifically are greatly valued by our community. So, why aren't we working harder to protect this important area of natural beauty and recreation that villagers and the college have both enjoyed for eight years? I agree with all the statements made by my fellow appellants here tonight and with the appeal letter we signed that clearly explains our arguments. In a recent email regarding tonight's meeting, Karen Winthrop described those of us who signed the letter as a group of nine neighbors. This is not accurate because I signed the appeal letter and I live about a half mile away from the golf course. I know that I am not alone with the many other villagers who are not necessarily just direct neighbors of the golf course, who would also ask you to limit the size and scale of this industrial development on a place beloved as a golf course. I respectfully ask that you remand this decision.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Antioch College. They have up to 27 minutes to speak, but they can choose to speak as any amount of time up to that. Reggie, are you going to start?
Okay. I'd like to start, and I've just got some brief statements to make, and then I'd like to turn it over to my solar team and Mark Roosevelt, who is my college staff, is with Well, first of all, I feel the array is consistent with the village of Yellow Springs' comprehensive plan and vision. Village Council approved an ordinance specifically to allow a commercial array of this size. The idea that we could put the array on our rooftops or parking lot canopies, and I've repeated myself many times, but if you take North Hall, for example, the 50 KW array we put on that roof, the roof structurally couldn't support it, so we had to buy a new roof for that building. That added $180,000 to the cost of that renovation project. Furthermore, the village Energy Board, which I respect tremendously, unanimously recommended approval of this array. Brent recused himself from any of that voting on that team. The site plan has been updated to meet all requirements of the zoning code and has satisfied village utility and zoning officials for completeness. All general condition standards were met, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously that the college had satisfied each standard. Concerns about noise, glare, aesthetics, sinkholes, and site drainage were addressed and supported by expert opinions and backed by data. An interconnect agreement has been signed and approved by the village utility official. The array is an investment in our local community, and it will create jobs and also co-op opportunities for our students. Our south campus will be transformed into an integrated learning landscape that will benefit our students and community alike, enhancing its overall use with nature, organic farming, walking paths, art park features, and many educational benefits. I also want to comment to the thought that this could be put somewhere else in the village. Well, first of all, it has to be behind our meter. So, if we put it, say, out, some have suggested the riding center, where there's plenty of space out there for an array, that's a mile and a half away. That would probably add about $350,000 to the cost of the project. So, trying to finance this project by a distributed system or a system that's a mile and a half away just is not financially feasible. We couldn't get an investor to support this project because of those costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. The next speaker from Antioch College, and please state your name and your position and address, I guess, with the college. Anybody else?
If you guys feel so inclined.
Hello, Brent Boyd, Chief Operating Officer, Solar Power and Light. I just wanted to make an observation that it seems like a lot of the comments that have been made, 99% of them is an occasion to retry what's already been tried on June 23rd and not addressing procedural issues of the Planning Commission, and so just wanted to offer those observations. No other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I intended to speak, but I would speak very briefly just so that we...
You can state your name.
Yes, Mark Roosevelt, President of Antioch College. First of all, I want to say I respect the neighbors and how they have conducted themselves through this and the good intentions of all involved and the goodwill towards the college. The land is zoned educationally, and in our original plan, we actually believed that what we're proposing for that space is as conducive with the neighbors' desire as anything that we could put on that land. Five acres would go for the solar array. The rest will be used for open space and for agricultural space, which in 90% of the definitions of open space is considered open space, farmland. We come together at Antioch, in a sense, in a presumptuous way, in a sense that the village is presumptuous. We come together to seek new and better ways of living. The way that we live in America, the way we produce and use energy, the way we farm, is not sustainable. It won't last. The college, in conjunction, and we think consistent with the spirit of the village that we're privileged to occupy, believes we have to discover new and better ways of living. It's not an easy process. I live in another community that has fought very hard against a wind farm in Cape Cod, I think mistakenly. There are always barriers to moving towards different ways of doing things. That is not to castigate those who seek to worry about other visions, but if we are collectively going to discover a different and better way of living, which I believe is a core educational value, in fact, is at the heart of what education should be about, and therefore I personally consider this an absolutely straightforward educational use. We have to be willing to both talk the talk in our curriculum, but also walk the walk in how we choose to live. The only way Antioch College can afford to do the solar array is inland, it is proximate to the power source. Our students will be able to visit this piece of land, hopefully, when the approvals are done, if granted, and they will see examples of how we can live differently. The EPA ranks geothermal and solar as the singular highest energy use in terms of conservation that this country now has. We will be the only campus heated and cooled exclusively by alternative green energy use. We will have a farm in which students can see what it means to raise their own food, eat their own food, and it will be compatible with how they choose to live their lives. So, I am deeply respectful of the process, the benign and courteous nature in which it has been conducted. We regret that our neighbors feel intruded upon by this project. On the other hand, we do consider it very consistent with the purposes of an educational institution such as Antioch that seeks to break new ground. We also consider it extremely consistent with the spirit and the values and the vision of the village in which it will be occupied. We would hope that you would not remand this and that we can proceed with the work in front of us, and we thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Will anyone else from Antioch be speaking? Can I get an answer? No? Okay, thank you. Laura, your rebuttal, three minutes.
Just a few points on what Reggie said about all aspects were studied. In fact, the only thing that got any study at all was John Eastman's opinion on stormwater, and he referenced his analysis, but there was no analysis attached. Now, he may have done it, but we just didn't get it. Calculations, runoff, impervious surface, all that stuff, we didn't see that. And then, the college filled in the sinkholes with riprap and so created fill in that area. So, how does that affect the stormwater runoff? So, that was not independently studied, and his opinion was solicited by Antioch and not the village. The merits of this project, we've tried not to talk about the merits because it's irrelevant, and as much as we appreciate what Mark said, and most of us who are neighbors are pro-solar, I've done a solar array project myself at the city of Wilmington. Even the materials they have, you put it on wasteland, you put it on disturbed land, you put it in, not on prime green space, again, sacrificing green energy, green space for green energy is normally not what's done, especially in a village where council, going back to the '70s, has bought contracts with renewable energy. Everybody who turns on their lights in this village has renewable energy, and so how much more does one need, is the question. And so, the merits of the project could be certainly more thoroughly looked at. So, one, I don't think we want to teach students that sacrificing prime green space for green energy is a good idea. I'm not sure we want to teach them that putting in pure electrons, when you get them up through the wires, is a good idea. You want to teach them about carbon offsetting, that's what the village has done. So, we do have some disturbed land in the village that could hopefully one day be used for a great solar project. Prime green space isn't the place. We all want better ways of living, and I applaud the village for having done that with its electric mix. I don't have any more rebuttal unless any of the neighbors...
No, I think that's it. It was just going to be you, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Actually, Laura, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, the appeal that we got with the seven points, are you guys asking us to also add these additional considerations that you brought today?
Yes, I believe this hearing would be additional evidence for you to consider.
Okay.
If the arguments flow from the record, I mean, we're limited to that record and the Planning Commission, anything that was presented that was outside that record, such as emails, et cetera, but if the argument is a logical extension of points that were raised in the Planning Commission, I think the counsel can fairly consider those.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, I want, something I actually probably should have asked in the beginning. I want to go around the table, ask each council member if they did receive the packet from both Planning Commission meetings and that you were able to watch either in person or via video the Planning Commission meetings in question. Mary Ann?
I received the packet that I guess had all the information from both June Planning Commission meetings. I reviewed everything in all the packet. I read over the minutes from both meetings at least two times. I viewed the hearing on YouTube, the June 23 meeting. I also took the diagram of the Antioch Farm thing, walked it all over, I walked where the solar array will be. I also visited Cedarville Solar and Urbana University Solar Array.
Thank you. Brian?
Yep, I have the packet right here. I read everything, actually, a couple items twice, especially the appeal, and also I... And also, I ended up watching both the June 9th and June 23rd YouTube meetings a couple times to walk through the arguments. So, yeah, that's what I've spent my last three days doing.
Jerry?
I'm just speaking to Mike. I guess I was fortunate enough to sit on the Planning Commission when the issue was discussed, but I did also go back through the packages that I received and compared what was said at the meetings and also my own recollection of the meetings.
Similarly, I received the packet with all the information from the two meetings. I read the minutes carefully more than once. I read the information in the petition. I watched the June 23rd meeting in its entirety on YouTube. And I also visited the Cedarville location. And I did mostly sort of drive-by of the place and looked at it on Google Earth and so, the site for the loca, for the solar power array.
I also did receive, obviously, the packet, read all of the materials that were in the packet. I watched the June 9th meeting live and I watched the June 23rd meeting on YouTube. And I did visit the Cedarville Solar Array. So, just to review again, we're talking about a procedural inadequacy because the Planning Commission either failed to consider an important argument or the Planning Commission failed to follow proper procedure so that all participants had a reasonable opportunity before a fair and impartial panel. Do you have any questions, counsel?
Yeah, actually, Lauren, I wanted to ask you a question. With the information related to the Energy Board, what part of the Planning Commission's decision do you think that impacted? Because I'm just trying to, you know, I've watched these meetings several times and I'm trying to figure out where you think that would have had an undue influence or an impact or...
I feel it affected the overall process.
You should come to the...
I think it's an excellent question, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk some more. I think it essentially had an undue influence over the entire process. And that's what I was so taken by, that I felt that to have an individual who is a paid employee, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that Mr. Henderson is not a paid employee of Solar Power and Light, that he's, he's, can financially benefit from this project, that he was a sitting member of an advisory board that did advise and make recommendation and made public comments and support throughout this whole process over the period of several years. And that's what I was so taken by, is that I felt it was absolutely improper to have somebody who was working both ends of the deal. And I'm, I'm rather, quite frankly, appalled that nobody else has expressed concern about this, other than our group. And I think we, as a village, really need to get our act together about these type of connections. I know we've had issues around other times, but this is, this is a major problem. Thank you again for letting me talk some more.
We need to close the public hearing. Before I do that, counsel, do you have, will you have any other questions of any of the appellants? So, I can close the public hearing.
Yes, I have a question of the appellants. One of the issues that you raised, I think, in your original lengthy document and I think in the appeal, was the issue of electromagnetic waves. You didn't say anything here, you haven't said anything about that today. You referenced, I think, the World Health Organization, which, I'm not clear whether Planning Commission had this or used this document, which talks about basically the benign impact, I think. And then, there is this document, Clean Energy Results, that I also talks about, I think, the negligible impact of the electromagnetic waves. And I'm not sure whose documents these were. So, I wasn't clear what, if this is information that Planning Commission had and read or if it's from the appellants.
Was it in the packet? I mean, if it was in, this is material that we can, that we can consider and that was in the Planning Commission packet.
So, we assume the Planning Commission reviewed this.
I can clarify that. I mean, both of those documents were provided by, I believe, Antioch College as part of their information to Planning Commission. Those were in the June 23rd packet.
Oh, okay.
And I believe as part of the Planning Commission record that the members of the Planning Commission all acknowledged, in the same way that council just did, that they had reviewed all the material that had been submitted. So, based upon the record, I think that one can safely assume...
Assume that Planning Commission...
Commission considered that information.
No, I mean, we're, we're, have we...
She raised the question, I think.
Okay, if somebody, she asked a question, one, one person can respond to that.
Stephen Rowe, Senior. The reason why we asked these documents to be included is because we saw no analysis whatsoever. These were presented and there are issues in regards to, for example, the solar panel. When we, when we said, what happens in 30 or 40 years when these things start to deteriorate? Who's going to then make sure that we are protected? Also, the, for the, the one in regards to the solar panels themselves, they're safe the way they are now, but once they start to break down, they can become hazardous, and we want to have that addressed. The whole point of this is that things were presented, but there was no supporting documentation, no real research done by the Planning Commission or anyone else. There were so-called expert opinions given, but there was no analysis. We heard from Mr. Eastman that, where's his report at? Where's his report? Does the council have this report, for example? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council table. I want to go around the table at this point and ask if, if council feels that there were procedural inadequacies that we could, that we should consider. And also, just to reaffirm your understanding and your comprehension of the materials that have been presented.
Are you starting with me?
Yes.
Well, when I was reviewing the issues raised by the appellants, the only issue that I felt was not addressed was the electromagnetic waves. I did not hear Planning Commission address that issue. I may be, I may have missed it, but I didn't hear them and I reread the testimony, or I mean, the minutes twice. And that's why I was questioning about these materials. So, I guess I can assume that Planning Commission reviewed these materials, which states that that is not a concern, that the electromagnetic...
Yes.
And then, we get into this sort of difficulty because we're not supposed to be, we have to be just looking at, did they follow the procedure? Did they address the things? Not whether we agree or we disagree. So, you know, it gets a little confusing. So, did Planning Commission adequately address the things? And adequately is, how do you address, you know, how do you weigh adequately? I mean, clearly, the appellants think that Planning Commission did not adequately address the issues. My sense is that, other than the fact of the electromagnetic waves, which I sense is not really an issue, Planning Commission did address all the issues. And from my point of view, Planning Commission did adequately address the issues. There were, the open space, and as I've been listening to the appellants, I've, just, just what was being spoken of today, there were six separate issues raised. But my sense was that the two primary issues that were of most concern, that the appellants feel were not adequately addressed, were, one, the open space issue, and, two, the incompatibility with the neighborhood. And I felt that Planning Commission did address both of those issues. The open space one, I thought, was acknowledged to be a tricky issue because the visioning document in particular talks about open space, lists the golf course as open space.
The comp plan. That's the comp plan that lists it.
The comp plan, yeah, the comprehensive plan. And at the same time, of course, this is private property. So, the village has, has said it's open space and it's private property. And Planning Commission did, I think, grapple with that. And I remember discussion in Planning Commission about if open space is on private property, some things that the private property owners can do or should do. And so, I heard that addressed and I felt that that issue was adequately addressed. In terms of the compatibility or incompatibility with the neighborhood, and it really, I think, comes back to the open space issues. And I think particularly Chris Till and John Strewing in particular grappled with that. And I recall in particular when John said that the deciding factor for him was that, well, first of all, that this is permitted, solar array is permitted with conditions, but that Antioch could build huge dormitories all over that, that land and they wouldn't even have to go for a permit for that. And so, I felt that, that Planning Commission did deal with both of these issues. That, I think, my sense is that are the primary issues that are the appellants concerned.
Thank you. Brian?
Well, you know, it's difficult to parse out the substantive and procedural. And, you know, I do think, as Laura mentioned, a lot of what we heard in this appeal was more towards the substantive. So, I'm going to try to keep it brief, but I want to go through what I think the appellants' seven issues are and then what, those were, I didn't hear any new issues except what Laura brought up about the sort of lack of having conditions as maybe suggesting the procedure was, was inappropriate or inadequate. And so, just addressing that one first, based on the two meetings and the discussions I heard, I think there were lots of reasons why the Planning Commission did not add lots of different conditions. It was talked about, gosh, for a total of four hours between those two meetings. And many conditions were raised and suggested. Tamara was here, also suggesting different options. And through a lot of discussion, those were sort of ruled out. So, I don't see inadequacy there. When I look at the first argument, and this is the one going to the comprehensive plan, you know, I looked at the sections that were cited by the appellants. And I think it's important to look at, and this was the argument that John Strewing made on the 23rd, which was, in the comprehensive plan, it goes on to say, after mentioning the golf course, increasing the public accessibility and interconnectedness, excuse me, a publicly owned open spaces within the village is a desirable goal and particularly biking, hiking. I thought that was spot-on, contextually, reading what the comp plan is saying. So, there was a lot of discussion there about the balance between renewable or alternative energies and the open space. But when I read that part of the comp plan right there, and again, that was cited in the hearing, I thought that was very clear and spot-on. So, I don't see any, I guess, wrong decision being made on that point. When I look at the second point, which is about specifically altered in the approved conditional use, I guess I should read the whole thing. "The proposed use will comply with all applicable requirements of this code except as specifically altered in the approved conditional use." I did not hear any challenge in, in this particular argument, nor to what Tamara had indicated, which was that the Planning Commission, within their purview, is allowed to designate an eight-foot fence if it's for security reasons. So, I haven't heard anything that would indicate that procedurally that decision was wrong. So, I don't see a problem there. The third point, "The proposed use will be compatible with the character of the general vicinity." So, here is where, as the commission members themselves said, it's difficult, it's subjective, but the arguments that were made, in particular, were about the educational purpose and tying this to the master plan. It was discussed, and I'm not going to judge on the substantive issue there. So, I think procedurally it was discussed, there was a response to this. So, I don't think that I can say that that was procedurally wrong. On number four, the appeal says that there was no discussion about general condition D, which is the part about how the area has to be adequately served. But it was discussed. Bill Bebko in particular said, "There are no additional public," excuse me, "there are no additional public utilities that need to be added." And so, I think it was discussed. I don't see a procedural issue there. The fifth one, E, talks about the, in particular, the glare. And I guess the other one that we were concerned about was noise. I really think that part of the hearing was talked out in quite a lot of detail. Not only does the equipment itself come under the decibel level, but I think it was Chris Till who addressed the fact that if there is a problem or a violation of our sound ordinance, then that would be something that residents could certainly bring and, and, you know, apply that law. So, I do not see a procedural problem here. I think the studies that were given on glare were clear enough. And again, I think that was adequately discussed procedurally. Okay. So, then, that leaves, I guess, six and seven. So, "Proposed use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district." Now, this is, I suppose, where there's, I see a difference in interpretation. I do agree that the focus of the Planning Commission was on looking at the development of Antioch College. And to that, Bill Bebko, Tim, all talked about this particular issue. I understand that there are some differences of opinion about what that particular part means. But again, I'm not going to decide substantively. I think that procedurally it was discussed. And the arguments that were made for this not affecting the development of the surrounding property around that particular solar array was addressed. The last part, which was G, about blocking sightlines, it was discussed and I agree that it did not apply. So, I guess, overall, when I watch the meetings, I do think that all these issues were discussed, most of them in detail. I understand that there are differences of opinion about how the decision might have been made, but I think that the Planning Commission did their job.
Thank you. Jerry? You can answer yes or no, too. You don't have to address every, every issue.
And I don't plan to. As a member of the Planning Commission and also an appointee to the Planning Commission by council, and as everyone knew upfront... by council, and as everyone knew upfront, I did serve as the alternate in this particular case. I believe that the chair of the Planning Commission went to great lengths to make sure that we did follow and review all areas of the proposal and all areas of what we were charged to do as Planning Commission members. He went to great lengths to have us vote on each area as it related to the procedures and the process that we went through. Although many of us took different routes to determine the adequacy of the proposal. And we also did request additional information during our hearings and so forth to get clarification. Given that, and I think the minutes and the records and the tapes speak for themselves, I feel that the Planning Commission did follow all the proper procedures.
Thank you. Lori?
I don't have too much more to add. I have served on Planning Commission, but was not, I was ill for the first hearing, so that meant I could not, could not really participate in the second hearing because of the way our charter rules. And I was also impressed with how John Strewing went through each of the conditions and carefully discussed them and kind of lined up the issues. I do think there was plenty of attention to detail given, and so that's how I feel.
Thank you. I agree with what everyone has said. I thought that John and Planning Commission did an excellent job vetting the issues. Our staff had input, our electric staff, our road staff, our planning staff all had input, and changes and clarifications that were asked for were added to the plan. So I feel that, I feel that it was very fully and well. The procedure was excellent, and I see no, I have no objection to what was done and see no inadequacies. Do we have a motion? Is there a motion to regarding the appeal? The motion could be, these are our choices. I move that the appeal be denied, I move that the appeal be granted, or I move that the matter be sent back to Planning Commission.
I'd like to make a motion that the appeal be denied.
Second?
I'll second that.
She just did. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Asklund?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Wintrae?
Thank you all. And please remember that we will keep, we do, we can't close the door, so please move downstairs if you're going to continue discussion.
The next item on the agenda is to review petitions and communications. Lori, did you?
Did you want?
Oh, we're doing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we are, we're doing the, Chris will speak to the referendum petition.
Yeah, all right, counsel, as you know, there was a petition filed to seek a referendum on the ordinance to proceed with funding for the CBE. Under the charter in Section 70, within 10 days after determining a referendum petition to be valid, then counsel shall have a summary of the proposed repealing measure published. We need to formally consider whether or not the, or the counsel needs to consider whether or not preliminarily the petitions, the petition is valid. I undertook a review on Friday once the petition was filed with the clerk, and within the packet, you've seen a preliminary determination of the petition validity. We cannot ultimately validate the petition because that's really done by the Board of Elections. This validation is to say that facially, on its face, the petition is valid as to form, and therefore we can proceed to the next step. That next step is, on August 4th, during the regular council meeting, council by charter has the opportunity to rescind the ordinance to determining to proceed the CBE funding, or it can pass a resolution to say that counsel will not revoke that, which then authorizes the matter to go to the ballot by way of referendum. We have a deadline to get that information to the Board of Elections by August 6th. We expect that that will be done on August 5th, and if counsel chooses not to rescind that. So with that said, in your packet, you had a document prepared by me where I indicate that the village solicitor, having performed a preliminary review of the referendum petition, seeking approval or rejection of Ordinance 2014-16, the ordinance by the voters of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, determines, subject to the certification of the signatures by the Green County Board of Elections, that the petition appears to be valid. I recommend that the Village of Yellow Springs Council approve the referendum petition to be valid for purposes of council, considering whether to either pass a repealing measure or take the action necessary to submit the ordinance to a vote of the electors at the next regular election at council's next regular meeting on August 4th, 2014, at 17:00 p.m. So.
So can we just take a motion?
Exactly.
Can I get a motion from council to accept the referendum?
So moved.
Approve, approve.
To validate or at least preliminarily certify the petition.
That the petition is valid on its face.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All those, can we just do a?
Voice votes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to petitions and communications.
Right. The main one that I would call attention to is John Gudjel's thanks, public thanks to the Human Resources Commission for giving $150 contribution to the Cultural Competency and Achievement Gap workshop that they held on June 21st. And otherwise, I think, oh, and then I guess more of an announcement that the NAMI Mobile will be here in town on July 22nd, and it will be, it's part of the 2014 Annie Discrimination Against Mental Illness Bus Tour, and it'll allow people and community members and the media to speak with representatives from the local state-level mental health organizations, which is, it's been a pretty important issue in this town, so I hope people will participate.
And I believe that's tomorrow from 11:00 to 12:30 in the parking lot at the BP station. Okay, public hearings and legislation. Second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 2014-17, approving a personnel policy manual.
Do you want this in its entirety or just by title?
Just read by title.
All right. This is an ordinance amending Section 252.06 Personnel Policy Manual of Chapter 252, Employees Generally, of Part II Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, counsel?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We talked about this, this has been a long time in the making. We've had three village managers working on this, and Kent, it was his last act as he walked out the door to get this finished, and we were very appreciative. We had great input from staff, which is also important. Patty is very appreciative of it and thinks it's a good document, and staff is generally supportive, very supportive of it. So we're very happy to have this. Counsel, any comments or questions before I open the public hearing? I will now open the public hearing, this is a second reading. Comments from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Any other comments from, Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, McQueen?
Yes.
Asklund?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
House? Yes.
Wintrae? Yes. Next is first reading of Ordinance 2014-18, approving a supplemental appropriation to cover increased expenditures in the third quarter and declaring an emergency, and this will have a public hearing because it is an emergency.
Whereas Ordinance 2014-07 was adopted to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Yellow Springs, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014, and whereas village council makes supplemental appropriations to reflect adjustments which occur throughout the fiscal year, and whereas this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to preserve the public interest and provide for a special emergency in the operation of village services, such emergency being the urgent necessity to provide for legitimate expenditures and amend the annual appropriation. Now, therefore, the council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that, Section 1, to provide for expenses and other expenditures of the said Village of Yellow Springs during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014, the following sums are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows. Section 2, that there be appropriated from the general fund. The current budget is $3,162,621. The supplemental is $300,300, making the amended budget $3,462,921. Section 3, that there be appropriated from the following special revenue funds. The current budget is $1,540,943. The supplemental is $117,995, and the amended budget is $1,658,938. Section 4, that there be appropriated from the capital project funds. That is currently $327,300, and there is no change. Section 5, that there be appropriated from the enterprise funds. That is currently $5,963,623. The supplemental is $153,824, and the amended budget is $6,117,447. Section 7, that the appropriation from the total fund budget is as follows. That current number is $10,994,487. This, the supplemental is $572,119, and the amended budget is $11,566,606. Section 8, the finance director and the village manager hereby authorized to draw warrants on the village treasury for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers therefore approved by an ordinance of council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except persons employed by authority of and in accordance with such ordinance. Section 9, the ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary to preserve the public interest and for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village where for this ordinance shall be in effect immediately upon its adoption by council.
Thank you. Kind of a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I will turn this over to Melissa, finance director.
So this is just basically housekeeping of some things that have already been on everybody's radar for a while. The general fund appropriations are to support the village manager's search. The transfers out, they're basically counted twice because it's a transfer out of the general fund as well as an expenditure that occurs within streets and parks as well, and also water. The street maintenance and repairs to support fair acres paving, which has been an issue for quite a while. Parks and Rec, two new mowers. The water fund, engineering for the limestone and cemetery street projects that were overlooked in the capital expenditures and appropriations. Water treatment supports the filter rebuild, which has already been approved by council in a previous meeting. So it's just basically a number of small housekeeping issues that have been on everybody's radar for a while, so.
Thank you. Counsel, questions, Melissa?
Not a question, but a comment. I know our, our street guys, when we talked about the two new mowers, I mean, they've been using all means possible to keep the mowers working, and I think it's going to take some of my stress off of them because they are very concerned about making sure that the village looks neat and clean, so.
I will open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments on this legislation? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Asklund?
Yes.
House? Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Wintrae?
Yes. Next is another emergency ordinance, Ordinance 2014-19, approving all transfers to date from the general fund to enterprise and special revenue funds.
Okay, whereas Ordinance 2014-07 and 2014-08 were adopted to make appropriations for expenses of the Village of Yellow Springs, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014, and whereas the Village of Yellow Springs Charter, Section 41, requires the transfer of funds be approved through an ordinance established by council, and whereas this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to preserve the public interest and provide for a special emergency in the operation of village services, such emergency being the urgent necessity to provide for legitimate expenditures. Now, therefore, the council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, hereby ordains that. Section 1, in accordance with Ordinance 2014-07 and 2014-08 and Charter, Section 41, the following transfers of funds for fiscal year 2014 are authorized. General fund transfers from 101-1009-59101, too. And then it lists each fund, you want those?
No, just do the total.
Okay, the total general fund transfers are $1,273,064. Section 2, the finance director is authorized to transfer the funds as they are certified and available. Section 3, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to preserve the public interest and shall take effect at the earliest date from the date of law.
Kind of a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa, would you address this one also?
Yep. There would be a change in order to reflect the transfers for the ordinance that just passed, 2014-18 needs to be inserted in the, whereas in Section 1, I overlooked that part. Basically, this is just a housekeeping issue. We have to spell out exactly where the transfers are coming from and going to, and these have been outlined in all the previous ordinances, so it's basically just making sure that we're covered.
Did you get that, Judy?
So it's whereas 2014-07, 08, and 18?
Yes, 07, 08, and 18.
Okay, I got it.
So then, should that also be in Section 1?
It is, yes.
Correct, it should be in there as well.
An addition of that number into Section 1.
Right, but it's two places, right?
Yes, two places.
I got it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, I will open the public hearing. Any comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the hearing, bring it back to table. Any comments, questions from council members? Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Asklund?
Yes.
Wintrae?
Yes. And finally, we have Resolution 2014-36, check signing, U.S. Bank, general checking and deposits.
I titled only.
You titled only, yeah.
Okay, yes. And that's it, check signing, U.S. Bank, general checking, and guaranteed deposits.
Kind of a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And this is, this is to add Patty as a signatory on the, on the checking account. Any other comments or discussions?
If you want me to pay bills. Yeah. And just, maybe it's public education, we specify that, that for many of these things, two signers are required so that it's a fraud prevention measure. So it's good to have lots of people who are, who are authorized, and then in most cases, that requires two people to sign them.
And the manager's clearly the one who should probably be signing most of them, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now we're to the part of the agenda where we hear from citizens about matters that are not on the agenda. Moving on to special reports, Melissa's back up again to do a mid-year budget review.
Okay, the document that I provided in the packet is fairly concise. There aren't any real areas of concern. The general fund, the revenues- The general fund, the revenues are doing great, real estate taxes are up, city income taxes are up as well. Expenditures are a little harder to gauge just because a lot of encumbrances are included where we try to provide for expenditures for the entire year. So if you look at some of our expense reports, it looks like at the 50% mark at the end of June, some of those are a little bit higher because those encumbrances are taken into consideration as well. It's fairly straightforward what I provided, so if anybody has any questions, I'm willing to field those. I don't really see any real areas of concern at this point. I think it's at the halfway point, everything looks pretty good. There are a couple of areas which I do want to watch carefully, the solid waste, the enterprise funds in general. Just keeping a close watch on those and how those tend to fluctuate. The water fund, the revenues are down slightly, but we did do a water rate increase. And with the routes only being read on a quarterly basis, we really haven't been able to feel the full effects of that yet. So that is going to be something that I see making a positive upturn. On the solid waste fund, again, I just want to point out that it's, it's one of those areas which I think that we need to keep an eye on. I did a pretty thorough analysis, which I shared with Patty on the solid waste fund. And we found some, some procedural things that we could try to enact, which the electric and the water fund, we use, we apply there as well, those accounting procedures. So we think that maybe internally, we're going to be able to try to help alleviate some of the pressure, but it's basically not a great situation. Our consumer fees aren't covering our expenses, so.
Right. And what Melissa found, just to clarify, was that there's a procedure that is applied to the other enterprise funds that for some reason had not been applied to the electric fund. And it's a method of.
Electric or solid waste?
I'm sorry, solid waste fund. That it has to do with applying our costs and into it and the in and out of our own costs of doing business in this fund. And that had been applied to all of the other enterprise funds, but for some reason was not taken into effect in the solid waste fund. So we have just begun applying that procedure to the solid waste fund in the same manner that is applied to the other funds. And I'm not really sure why this wasn't count previously, caught previously in some of the audits, but Melissa did a great job and she found it, and we're going to start applying that. So you should see that level out.
Great.
Have we talked about raising the phone?
We, we haven't, but we've just renewed our contract with Rumpke for the one-year extension. So Melissa and I do intend to sit down and look at, we're going to have to start the budget review anyway for next year. And so, you know, we're going, we're going to sit down and look at everything, and she's probably not looking forward to that. But, but that will be one thing that we do look at. And hopefully, it won't be necessary, but, you know, we'll let council know what we find.
But we've done a very thorough review of the solid waste fund. And it's pretty easy. I mean, you have consumer fees coming in, and then you've got the Rumpke bill that comes out every month, and it's very detailed in terms of what we're paying for. So the analysis was really in-depth, and we know where there are a number of issues that need to be addressed. Cleanup week is one of them. It's not one of those things that we pass along to the customer, but the village absorbs the cost. And this year, it was almost $6,000 for cleanup week. So it's just something that Patty and I had talked about, and she had some creative ideas to maybe keep from passing that along to the consumers. So I think that we've got a number of, we know where we need to look at, and we know what we need to address. So I think that Patty's super creative, and she's came up with some good ideas already just at first glance, so I feel good about it.
Well, I want to say I think this budget review is excellent. And I just have one question related to the encumbrances. What are your expectations that we will spend that money by the end of the year? Or it's not clear?
I think that the money that's encumbered is a pretty accurate depiction of what we are going to spend. We encumber a lot of things for a full year, which are fairly tried and true, like our healthcare costs. The solid waste contract is pretty, pretty predictable. The power costs are encumbered for the entire year, so I left off the expenditure line because it's pretty much on target. But if you look at our expense report, it looks like we're spending the entire year's budget almost, just because of that contractual service that is encumbered. Our encumbrances, I think, are fairly predictable, and that's why we go ahead and commit to that upfront. There are a lot of other things that we just kind of wait and see how it goes. But yeah, I'm pretty sure that most of the things are going to go through. Again, some of the capital projects have yet to be done or become encumbered, so it does slightly skew things, especially in some areas. Some areas have, you know, moved along a little quicker than others. So it does kind of skew things as well because a lot of those projects haven't been encumbered yet. But there's a lot of footwork that goes along with some of those projects, so.
So on the solid waste, will you be bringing something back to council about the solid waste fund? That could be either for Patty or Melissa.
As far as potential increases?
Yeah.
Yes. We'll, we'll do that well before the end of, of the contract that we currently have with Rumpke. I'm thinking that we need to talk about it actually before the end of the year to potentially, anything to be enacted by the first of the year. So Melissa and I will probably get together within the next month or so and start really looking at percentages and what we think can happen.
But didn't we just renew the contract?
We did.
Is it an August to August contract?
It's an August to August contract, but that, if you should, if you potentially are going to change your rates, you would probably want to do it at the beginning of the, of the budget year.
Okay.
Okay, so unless anybody has any questions?
Thanks.
Thanks. Good job. Let's see, what's next? I see the guys are sitting back there, Jason and Johnny are back there. So we are going to discuss the Sutton Farm. For folks who don't know, we've been talking about adding a utility building out there, a large utility building, because we have, the facility out there is quite inadequate. We have a lot of really expensive equipment, and at this point, it's sitting out in the, in the weather. So we're investing in equipment and we're not protecting it. So we've, we've talked about this, this project for a long time now, and I think council is, is getting pretty close to being ready to commit. Did you want to address it? Should I just bring Jason up?
Well, I just want to say, you know, I've talked to both Jason and Johnny about this. And what, what we're proposing and what I'm recommending to council is it's a 12-bay building. The crew quarters are not included in that 12-bay building. The crew quarters will be another project for next year at, renovated on the site where they currently are. This building would simply consist of 12 bays. We currently have nine pieces of equipment to go in the first nine bays. The 10th bay would be taken up by the trailer that we haul the mowers on, because right now, in order to store the mowers adequately, they need to take them off of the trailer every day and then put them back on the trailer again every morning when they want to go out. So the, you know, if we have the 10th bay, they can pull that in through there, leave that parked for the night, and be ready to go out the next, the next day. The 11th bay would be reserved for the police department in the event that they have a vehicle impounded that needs to be secured. Right now, we don't really have an adequate place to do that. So that would be the 11th bay. That leaves one bay, which could be used for storage until it becomes necessary to put a piece of equipment in there. One of the things that is also in my report, the lamp posts. Potentially, these lamp posts that we're talking about purchasing for streetscape could be stored inside this bay until we're ready to put them out on the street. So that type of thing, that's why we're recommending the 12 bays. One bay would have a pit, as opposed to having a lift, it would have a pit so they could pull the vehicles in, change the oil, do the undercarriage work, all that type of thing. Our crews would put in the electric, so there, this is, this is just the building that we're recommending.
So is this six on either side or 12 straight?
No, it's one big long. And I can have Jason or Johnny come up if you would like and answer any further questions.
I guess Jason got elected.
Yes, as previously discussed, this is 12 pull-through bays. So we'll have the ability to pull trailers in without backing them up, what have you. So one garage door open, pull through, and then out the other side.
Is that the size that was originally presented to us?
Yes. Yes. Per Karen's request, I think she wanted to try to see if we could downsize. And after talking with everybody and the police department needing their own separate bay, and just in case, I think if we're going to grow and utilize this building the way it could be utilized, I think that we need to keep the full 12 bays.
I don't, I didn't necessarily want to downsize. I just didn't like the ambiguity of whether the crew quarters were, were going in this building. Do, so, so any other questions about the building itself?
And one thing that Jason failed to remember, a safety issue of being able to drive through versus backing up, because we have some big equipment, and there's always that, that issue, does that driver see somebody?
Right, and this would be just like a fire truck bay. You would pull in one side and pull out the other side. It would be.
Except in Yellow Springs.
So what kind of size are we talking about for a bay?
The doors, I believe they're 16-foot tall, 10-foot wide. And that will house all of our dump trucks, our vector truck, and everything else will be able to go into those bays.
Well, I like the fact that we're building it with a little bit of wiggle room, because it's cheaper to build it all now and not try to add on as you go along. That's, that just tends to be more expensive. So these, this is the, probably the least expensive way. A big pole barn like this, probably the least expensive kind of construction you can do. So this seems very reasonable.
So Patty, can you address the, the process now going forward? What needs to be done as far as bids are concerned?
Well, if, if council wants to move forward, we would follow the normal procedure of authorizing to go out for bids. Then we would bid out the specifications of the building that we want to end up with. And Jason has those, and he and Johnny have looked at them and, and feel this is what we need to do.
Does it seem likely this could be put up before the winter starts picking its toll?
I would think so. I would think so, yeah.
Yes. As soon as this gets done, I mean, we can move on this pretty quick.
Good. Can I have a motion that?
I move that we move forward with the, we're authorizing Patty to move forward with bidding out the Sutton Farms new structure.
I second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Great.
Great.
Next item on the agenda is street musician agreement from the Public Arts Commission. I will turn this over to Brian.
Okay, so we are not planning to have a discussion tonight, but I guess the first thing that I do want to emphasize about this agreement is that, as it says across, it is a draft. And our next step is to circulate this to as many people as possible. We're welcoming any kind of feedback on it. You know, obviously, now it's part of our packet. But we had a great discussion last Wednesday at our Public Art Commission meeting. The chief was there, Karen was there, Patty was there. We had several business owners. Missing were some of our local street musicians, which was unfortunate, but that's okay. I'm still going to be reaching out to them to get their feedback.
Were some of them there?
None.
None.
So, yeah, so that was, and, you know, I, I'm still going to hold them to the comments from our prior meeting that they do want to be involved in helping to mediate this. And, you know, I understand it's hard for people to get to meetings, so that's okay. So several people worked on this draft. I, you know, again, it's, it's the first go at it, but it does seem to address a lot of the issues that we talked about with the goal to make this more of a memorandum of understanding. Let's, you know, talk about what the standards of consideration are. Once we come to some agreement as, as a council about what this should look like, then what we have proposed is that we put this on a card. Business owners have it, the street musicians have it. And so if somebody's not being considerate, then this is the way to sort of lead the discussion or the mediation, hoping to avoid the escalations and the conflicts and basically preserve everything we like about, you know, having the, the street musicians downtown. So, yeah, I wasn't.
I mean, I think we can discuss it. I mean, things, things were, things are moving along a little bit more quickly than, than expected. So, I mean, I would, I would, if, if council feels comfortable with it, I wouldn't mind coming out of this, saying that you can go ahead and that this can be distributed. I, I think that.
Oh, yeah. I like it. I think it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Sort of midway, it says taking a 60-minute break or moving to another street before performing for one hour.
After.
After, yeah.
After perform. So does that mean you can perform for an hour and then you either have to take a break for an hour?
Right. Or.
Or move someplace. Because I think it's, it might be a little clearer.
Okay.
Something after performing for no more than an hour, maybe say, take a 60-minute break. And then the last thing is if this agreement is not respected, further action can be taken by the Yellow Springs Police Department in accordance with local ordinances. But do we have local ordinances that can be?
Yeah, noise ordinance.
And we have just an ordinance for blocking the sidewalk for public disturbance. Do we want our attorney to address that?
Well, yeah, you have general ordinances that could be enforced that would further the concept of asking the street musicians to move along in compliance with the policy if it were adopted. But there's no specific legislation. I know that there are other communities that have that. It's not entirely clear if council has an appetite to go there yet.
Right.
I suspect not.
I thought that I had heard that the police felt like they didn't have a way to deal with this.
Well, this is kind of the first step to that. I, I think that we agree that we, that there is a policy that we want these, you know, this to happen.
Right. And Mary Ann, chief, chief and I were also at the Public Arts Commission meeting the other night. And in, what I heard chief say was, yes, they have other ordinances that they can enforce. They would prefer to have this kind of a, an agreement, you know, amongst themselves so that the police don't have to get involved. If the police do have to get involved, then at that point, these other ordinances that are already in effect could take effect, could be enforced.
Okay. If it's not self-policing, it's going, it's going to be a huge burden on our police department. I mean, it, you know, just, just the whole thing of, you know, the time, the timeframe, how long you can play, the decibels, it really is, it's going to be very difficult. So we're hoping this is going to work.
And I have one more comment. The first bullet, not interrupting a busker in the middle of a number. You know, if it's a number that takes maybe a few minutes, that's no problem. But some of these things sort of go on, on, and on. I don't think it, I don't think, I would want to have someone have to stand for 10 minutes waiting to tell a busker to turn the volume down.
Right. Yeah, well, I think, I, I think that's a good comment. I guess the counter to that is that it is perceived as being rude from the musicians. And so I, I mean, I see what you're saying, and maybe there's a way to balance that. I guess one thing that's important to me, though, is that all parties are being respected. And my concern, and I think this, this was borrowed from Portland, my concern is that that interruption is, is usually tied to some emotion that starts the escalation. But I think that's a great comment, and I, and I think we have to, you know, look at all those things, so.
But I also think if, if there is this card, I mean, that person could almost put the card out there. I mean, if they didn't have time, if it was a store owner that didn't have the time, they could put the card out, and that would be pretty self-explanatory as to, as to the fact that they were, you know, feeling like this person was violating.
Especially as a first kind of move. And most of the time, songs don't go on for that long, I would say.
So can we get a motion to?
Actually, just one more question to Chris. Do you think we need to do anything more? List the relevant ordinances by?
I don't think so, because I think that the, the hope is that people will respect, I mean, this is a goal, a rule, policy that frankly, in some ways doesn't, shouldn't even need to have to be written, because people should intuitively know and respect one another. unfortunately that doesn't always happen. My view is, is that let's see how this works, if we find that it's not effective, we're probably gonna have to tweak some of the ordinances that exist because they're not specific enough perhaps, but again, my hope is, as yours is, that we don't have to go there.
Yeah, I think the more sort of simple and straightforward you can keep the language, the more like, this is people talking to people, not lawyers talking to citizens, talking down to people.
Right.
The less we go in that direction, the better.
And that was really, yeah, the goal.
And so I like even just, yeah, you don't interrupt people in the middle of a song. Of course, there's a million exceptions to probably almost anything on here, but if you start delineating those, it'll, it stops being the kind of document you want it to be.
Okay, motion, somebody wanna make a motion? Brian, I mean, I guess it's your, it's your proposal, do you wanna make a motion?
Okay, so, I, I guess, I move to, I'm trying to think how we wanna, what we're doing, so.
Do you want to?
Are we adopting this, or are we?
Are you wanting to take it back to the buskers to?
Pilot, I think we are, we are sort of pilot.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
That, that, that it can be distributed.
Yes, okay, so, yeah.
Is this going to be the, really, it's, when you adopt this motion, whatever it is, you will be making an official policy of the village, aren't you?
Do we need a resolution?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I think, I think Chris is just asking is are we sure that we want this to be?
Can we just call it a pilot policy, that we're pilot, we're gonna try piloting this and?
Pilot program.
Subject, yeah, subject to?
Feedback and practice.
And refinement.
Okay. Do I have to say all that?
Yeah, you wanna put it on, some sort of to be reviewed in X number of months, do you wanna just let it hang?
No, I'd actually, I mean, I'm hoping, let's say by our second meeting in August, to have some solid feedback from everyone. I know Public Art Commission members are gonna help with sort of getting this out there, and again, I do wanna get the feedback of the street musicians and see what they think.
How do you plan on getting it out there, like have little cards?
Uh, walk the streets, so, yeah, I'm planning to just kind of have copies and, I mean, I don't wanna put it on a card until we've tweaked it a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I mean, I wanna basically walk downtown and kind of get this into everybody's hands and just say, what do you think?
Buskers and business owners.
Right, and, and citizens as well, yeah.
You need to, you're gonna take draft off of it, right?
Well, I, you might leave draft on it, it indicates, or, well-
I don't, I don't like, I don't think draft, even though it's a pilot, it's, shouldn't be a draft.
Okay, take the word draft off of it.
Okay. But, yeah, I'm, my intent was to get that feedback, and then, you know, I think, what is that, August 18th, that maybe then we can move forward to put it on a card and distribute it. Does that seem reasonable?
So, so, given that, can't we just say that we're gonna go forward and issue this and then take the?
To be reviewed, this, this is a policy to be reviewed.
Formal vote.
Yeah.
At a later date.
At a later date.
Right.
But I'd still like to have a vote that we're agreeing with this.
Okay.
Before, I think before a document goes out from the village, we should have a vote.
So, I would like to move to allow the Public Art Commission to disseminate this document for feedback, review, and bring it back to council on August 18th.
Wait a minute, feedback or review, I, aren't you talking about actually enforcing it, I mean?
Well, implementation.
Implementation.
For pilot implementation, kind of.
I mean, do you, is that not what you're wanting?
Yeah, he just, he wants to get it out there with-
These things are great.
But, well, my only concern is just that maybe there would be people that would wanna come and speak to this at our meeting, but, I mean-
We've heard from people.
Okay.
I feel like we've talked about this at two meetings.
It comes two times.
Okay, so I move to pilot the Yellow Springs Street Musician Performer Agreement. Does that work?
Say it again.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry to do that.
Yeah, well, and, yeah, thanks to the Public Art Commission, it was really, yeah, it was a very good process.
Council chambers upgrade, Jerry?
We're gonna be talking at the-
Cable access, or?
The cable access meeting on Wednesday.
Right.
I missed the presentation from the folks on the sound system. I brought you up to speed, so we're gonna be specifically talking about that, because we, we see some areas where they probably offer the Cadillac, but we don't need Cadillac, and-
Really, consultants offering a Cadillac? Surely not.
And the group has some, some good ideas to help us get our costs down, we have received information on-
The desk?
The desk, the new platform and so forth, so we'll be tweaking that, and then I gotta give us Chris again, because we'll probably have to go out with bids on both of those two items because of the dollar amount and so forth, so I should be ready at the next council meeting to give you more information and also bring Patty up to speed on it.
Great, thank you. We have no new business, moving on to the manager's report. Your first one, the first one.
Okay, the RFQ for the criteria architect-
See you, Chris.
For the water treatment plant is being reviewed by our legal counsel. Here's, here's what counsel needs to understand about when you're doing a design-build plant. The Ohio Revised Code has a very specific section on design-build water plants, believe it or not, and it has to do with what they call either a criteria architect or a criteria engineer, which is essentially what we are asking for. We're asking for someone who's gonna come in, look at what we are talking about, look at our current system, our needs, what size we want it to be, all of the water softening options, all of the different things, and then that person will take that information that we give them, and we put into the RFQ for them to complete 25% of the design. And then that person will act as our agent with the second bidder, who will actually build the bit, complete the design and build the plant to ensure that we get what we want. The ORC prohibits the same engineering firm to have both of those contracts. So, we are putting this out for a criteria, what they call a criteria architect or a criteria engineer, and I gave that to Chris to review to make sure that we are in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code, and then I will let that, and he told me that he would get that to me tomorrow. Jason is working on the flow-through device for the Beaver issue, he does have some concerns about the size of it, so he's, you know, he, we've talked and come up with a couple of other suggestions that if it's not quite large enough, which, the size that he's been talking about with others, and I think John may be one of those people, he's concerned that it might not be large enough, but we can increase the flow because we have a weir there that controls the water flow and the water level, and we can, we can take part of that out, we can take all of it out, we can moderate the flow some in that way by doing that. So, we are moving forward with that at this time to purchase what we need and to get that taken care of.
Has Jason talked with John about the level of, sort of the optimum water level that we wanna get that's gonna work for the detention area and for the wetland?
Not, not yet, I'm thinking, I should have a meeting with you tomorrow.
Yes, you do.
So we could follow up tomorrow.
Right, thank you, yeah. All right, we will get that taken care of, Mary Ann, and address that, and, because that'll be part of the, that'll be part of the size issue of what we wanna put in there, so.
Yeah, but it's also sort of the level of where you put the-
Correct, it's how, it's where you put this into the pipe, the, on the high side, and it's gonna lower it to the other side, so.
Okay, thank you.
We are releasing three RFPs for the three projects, the Mills Lawn Sidewalk Repair, the next phase of Streetscape, and the upgrades to the ballfields at Gaunt Park, those will go out, the Streetscape, Karen will, as much as possible will be completed before Street Fair, and what is not completed by Street Fair, the work will stop and clear out, and they'll finish after Street Fair, is my understanding.
Where will that be, then?
It's from Dino's-
11th.
No, no, where?
From Dino's and eventually down to Glen Street, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we are working on that. There have been some recent issues with brown water in the village, and that's primary, primarily due to the fact that the system has not been flushed in ages because of the problems with the filter at the plant. I talked to Joe Bates about this, and we did receive notification late last week that the parts are ready for shipment, barring the complications, the filter should be repaired no later than the first full week of August, and at that point, we will begin flushing the system, and it will be, with all apologies to the residents, you're gonna have brown water, and it's going to be very brown because the system hasn't been flushed in a long time. So we're looking at ways to disseminate the information to folks to, if you have brown water, please run your taps, you may wanna consider running a cycle through your washing machine and your dishwasher, and just let that run clear, and we do have things like red out if someone washes their laundry and it gets the rust in it, we have something that they can take that out.
Patty?
Yeah.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I support everything you just said, and one of the things I wanted to make clear to people is that the only reason it hasn't been flushed because the filter's out is the need to have enough water, it has nothing to do with, in other words, the brown water in the system has nothing to do with the fact that a filter was out, in other words, the water coming out of the filtration plant is clean, clear.
Right.
The issue is in the corrosion in the piping system that we haven't been able to clear out, because the total production level of water, they don't wanna run the number of high surface pumps they need to flush it.
Right.
Because I've seen instances in the social media where people think that a filter being out is what's causing the brown water, and that's not the case.
Thank you, John, that's a very good point. I've spoken to Johnny about the lamp posts that we need to complete Streetscape, and he has, he has a concern that the manufacturer is either going to change the style of the Streetscape posts, and we won't be able to get exactly the same ones, or that they're going to raise the price. And his recommendation is that we go ahead and buy what we need to complete the project so that they are consistent throughout the project.
I thought that they had been bought a long time ago, so I'm surprised to hear that they haven't been purchased.
Yeah, he says that-
We were told that they had bought all of them.
Yeah, so, he's telling me that he needs to buy 22 more, so, is it council's recommenda- or wish that we go ahead and?
Absolutely.
Now, will that complete the one side?
He says 22 will complete the project.
Okay.
Both sides, then?
Yeah, he said the project.
Project, alright.
Alright, the truck that we use to set the electric poles has four stress fractures in the turret and has been taken out of service by the inspector for safety reasons, we cannot use that truck. So, the estimate to repair the truck could exceed $25,000. This truck was slated for replacement next year in next year's budget. Johnny would like to go ahead and look at purchasing another truck. You're gonna have a little bit of sticker shock because a brand-new truck like this is approximately $250,000.
Twice what we were expecting.
Right, and we just priced that. Now, that said, we could probably, and we have our person that we purchased this equipment from looking into this, purchase a used truck, and by used, when you talk about these trucks, they don't have a lot of mileage on them. We could probably purchase a used truck with low miles, with a certification of its condition for half that, which is what was budgeted. We are looking into that, I don't normally think it's a good idea to buy a used vehicle or a used piece of equipment like this, but in this case, it's just one of those pieces of equipment that just, you know, you use it to set poles, and that's it. So, if we can be comfortable with the mileage and the condition of the truck and the certification of the inspector, then that would be my recommendation to council is that we go that route.
I appreciate that, I was actually gonna ask about that, I had a citizen bring that up to me.
The key is just the certification.
Correct, correct, and, and these trucks are inspected by safety inspectors, he took ours out of service and said, you will not use that truck, so.
Wow.
That's what we're looking at right now, and as soon as I get more information, we'll bring that back to council.
Did we find the stress factors, or?
These, these vehicles that are used in this type of thing get inspected on a regular basis. We knew that it may had a stress fracture in it, but we thought it had one, but it has four, so. There has been an issue recently with food vendors parking on the roadway and serving food out of their trucks for special events or something. This is a violation of the zoning code, and what we're trying to do is be proactive and get the word out to the, the business owners and the vendors that this is a violation, and we appreciate it if they would move off the street somewhere. We understand there may be one coming again this weekend, and we're trying to work with another property owner to see if he'll allow them to actually park on his property across the street from where the event is occurring. So, you know, we, we're trying to get the word out to folks that this is a violation of the zoning code, because you are blocking other businesses, you are taking up parking spaces, that kind of thing. So, if anyone has any questions about that, they can, they can send them to me. And the last thing I wanna know, I tell you that is not on my report, is they began milling in Fair Acres today, and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, they will not only have the milling done, but the paving, so, they're up there working.
Yeah, they started bright and early.
No sleeping in, Brian.
No, not for me.
Does anyone have any questions?
Great, good report, thanks. I have one question, what will happen with the, the truck that we have?
We're actually looking if, if we can trade it in, whether it be for parts that aren't, like, the turret is what's, yeah, the turret's what's stressed, if we can trade it in for the value of some of the other parts, you know, if not, we can always sell it on the government bids as is, and just disclose, 'cause somebody might buy it for parts, so. I mean, it, this truck probably, I think Johnny told me, it has 36,000 miles on it.
Which is probably a lot, when you consider that it's driving around Yellow Springs, it's driving in a two square mile village.
Yeah, but that's, that's typically how these things are in a municipality, you never drive them for any great distance, they're, the problem is when you're pounding a pole, you know, so.
Thanks. Judy?
Just, it's been tremendously busy, and I'm leaving on vacation on Friday, which scares me to death at this point, but-
I got you, I got your back.
So, Patty and Ruth Anna Babett are just gonna tag-team it, and I'm sure it will be just fabulously fine, and thank you very much for bringing me to that.
Judy, I just wanted to ask, so, if people can still use your email and somebody's monitoring that, or?
Yeah, that would be neat.
Okay, cool.
And I wanted to thank Judy for that, there has, has been, there have been a lot of public records requests, she has been spending a lot of time on that, and she's done an excellent job working with Chris, pulling them all together, stacks, large stacks of paper, did an excellent job doing that, so, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, Judy.
And I'm glad it's you and not me in the car with those kids.
The dart gun's still in order.
And crank is going too, clank, is it clank?
Clank's going.
Clank's going too, a dog too, wow.
Is she going on a cruise?
Oh, God.
I'm like, is she going on a cruise with a dog?
Oh, no.
The camera person as well, a camera person, that'd be pretty good.
Yeah, we might get a reality shot of this.
Yeah.
Oh, standing reports, and I wanna say something, and, and I hope I don't offend anybody, but I think, I, I have asked, I've talked to Chris about it, and I've asked him to write a statement, we have got to advise our commissions of sunshine law and proper procedure, if nothing else, that was certainly apparent in the hearing today. So Chris and I have talked about it, and, and he will be working on that.
I, you know, that's, it's one of those things that they, when-
You know, that's, it's one of those things that they, when you join a commission, you get in the letter, it says, "You need to familiarize yourself, and here is your CD," or "Here's your link." And if you have questions, ask your council rep. But I would also be happy to meet with those folks individually if you want to just say, "You know what, you're going to have to make an appointment with the clerk and go get scared." I would be happy to do that.
Yeah. That should be our standing, I think that's a great idea for a standing policy.
Because I wasn't quite sure how, I mean, you can give a lot of reading material, and it just doesn't really.
We have our council rules, and I can't recall if any part of the council rules specifically address boards and commission, but it'd be nice to get that in, in writing, because we do review those rules every year, to say when new members join, it's a council response, council member's responsibility to make sure that they are meeting with the.
Well, and email is especially tricky because it's kind of innocuous, and, you know, you're just exchanging information, and a lot of people don't understand that that becomes a public record.
Right.
And so, I think minimal training or a meeting with Judy might be in order.
I mean, and I bear some responsibility. And, you know, it's so, I think the Energy Board, people get so excited about things. And I guess I don't, I mean, like, frequently, someone will send out something to the whole Energy Board about an article they've read or something.
That's fine. That's great.
But then, if one Energy Board person is communicating with another via email, is, are you allowed to?
You just cannot involve the entire committee.
But you can communicate with another person, but it is a public record.
Right.
It's a public record if you're discussing.
Energy Board.
Sure.
Well, but it's not just that it's a public record. Those were public, those emails were public record. It's that it's a public meeting, and you can't have a meeting that's not announced.
You can disseminate the information in an email, but you cannot discuss it.
But, no, I mean, if one, if one, if one board member is emailing another board member, and they're emailing something about something the board is working on.
They're allowed to do that.
As long as it's two people and not, not a quorum.
But you can't, you can't round robin. One, one board member can't independently email each board member.
Yeah.
That's, that's just like round robin. You can't do that verbally, and you couldn't do that via email.
And that's where you get real sticky once you start it. You're going to say, "Well, I think this person should know about it." Okay, this person might need to know. And you just end up with everybody discussing something that shouldn't be discussed.
Yeah. The other issue, so there's, and there's, so there were actually sort of two issues that they raised. One was the issue of whether there was kind of meeting taking place. But the other was the question of conflict of interest.
Yeah.
And the necessity to recuse yourself from any and all discussion related to anything you might perceive yourself or, and those rules about conflict of interest should also be more effectively communicated.
And they apply to every commission of council.
And they apply to every commission of council.
And the idea that it isn't necessary to follow, I was a little surprised by that that was told.
Yeah.
I think there's confusion, though. I mean, I think it's very confusing when you're talking about a private project, but then the private project needs to go to the local government to get approval.
To a different body.
Yeah, I mean, it was a little confusing.
Well, you know, I don't want, I don't want to necessarily talk about it right now, but this is, you know, at some point, when, you know, we've talked about reviewing commissions, again, they weren't asked. You know, I guess that's another, another question is, you know, the action and the activity of boards and commissions, are they required, or what is their responsibility to provide recommendations when they haven't been, when it hasn't been requested by the, by the body that's hearing? I, and that's, that's a more, that's more of a philosophical, that's definitely a philosophical question. I don't want to, you know, I just want to put it out there. So, what's, anything else on that?
Well, just, I mean, then we'd have to review the missions, because some of the missions do indicate that they should be doing that, like the HRC.
Yes.
My issue is not with whether they should have written the thing, but just.
Right.
You've got to recuse yourself if you think, if there's any, any potential that, that you're really, you could, you could benefit from a decision that results from the writing or from any activity of the, of the board that you're on.
Right.
Right, including, you're out of the emails and all that.
Now, it was a different commission. It was not planning commission. Planning commissioners weren't involved. I didn't feel like it was material.
Right, I agree.
But it was disturbing what they found. Shouldn't have happened.
So, let's summarize this, because I'll be going back to the Energy Board. One board member can email another about the work that's being done. That's okay. And it is a public record.
They're all public records.
Two, you can't, you can't, like, email one person, then email the next, and email the next. Or, or, I suppose, you can't send, send something to A, and A sends something to B.
No, because if more than.
Right, you can't do the telephone game.
Enough members are involved in the discussion at any point to make it a quorum, then you can't do it.
Yeah, it's effectively the same thing.
Now, what about if you phone up someone?
Still, you can't do that. It's the same, you cannot discuss that.
Okay, and then.
Quorum cannot discuss it.
The other thing was about the issue of recusing and being involved in, being involved in a report that had a benefit to that.
I think, I think what might be helpful is maybe Judy or I can look on the, probably me, since Judy's going on vacation, can look on the Attorney General's website and get a, get a little handout that there, they have open meetings, handouts that kind of explain the whole thing, and maybe that would be helpful.
Well, they get that.
Yeah, they do get that.
I mean, that's the thing. I think that people need to be able to say, "Hey, but what about this? But what about that?"
Yeah.
I do think they sort of need a Q and A because it's, yeah.
And I'd be welcome, willing to help with an FAQs, because, I mean, a lot of my commissions, just because there's so much going on, tricky things have come up, so, about Facebook, about emails, so.
And then perhaps each council member can take that back to their, their individual committees.
And I think that, that has to be reiterated, is that we are the watchdogs of each of our commissions. And so, you know, I would, I would say actually that if there, if there is, I don't know, I almost feel like you need to be, that the, that the chair or that the council member needs to be copied on almost all of the emails in case, I, well, maybe not. That's probably going too far. That's probably going too far, but.
Then you're sending it to two people.
Right, I, but, but, you know, you need to, you need to absolutely, everybody needs to be the watchdog to make sure that there aren't, aren't things going on in their commissions that are against, against Ohio law.
Right, and again, it's not purposeful, but, yeah, it's easy to happen.
Okay. I don't know if I get, well, planning commission, do we really need to, is there anything at planning commission beyond?
No, and the last, no, because that's all, I haven't been to the last few meetings. Jerry has, but we're not meeting this month, and that's the way it goes. And the planning commission, Green County, will be meeting tomorrow night, so it hasn't, it didn't meet last month.
Okay. Jerry, Village Mediation?
Mediation, they'll be having a meeting in August. Library Commission meeting is in August, I believe, and Community Resources are working on informational packages for the community, so.
Brian?
Yep. So, the Human Relations Commission, I already mentioned that August is going to be block parties month, and actually, Chrissy Cruz is our point person on that, and we've already been getting a lot of feedback that's very, going to be really fun. The other thing that's really been nice with, now that we have a full seven members of the commission, is people, the discussions are really refining what our mission means, and I've really appreciated that. So, we've been guiding people, and we're going to educate more about not just asking for money in general, but targeting it to how it fights discrimination and prejudice. You know, so an example is like handicap-accessible porta-potties for an event or something like that, so something that really ties to the mission. And the other thing is, we had a goal of having an online resource guide, because we realized paper guides go out of style. So, these are for things like, do you need help paying your bills? Where are the food banks? That sort of thing. So, it's going to be called yellow springs help.org, and we're actually, I mean, it's really exciting. It's patterned after some other websites like this. All the resource providers fill in their own information, and we're going to be spending the next year educating people on how to use it. So, going to the senior center, going to the churches. We're going to try to get an intern to work with dispatch, so, pretty exciting. What do I got next? Public Art Commission. We already talked about the street musician issue. We also are very close, I think, to pulling the trigger on the Y.S. Skate Park, and Patty's working with one of our local skaters, and he's tied into the community, and we realize that we can get a free consult from one of these companies, so they can actually come in, and they have expertise in talking to village government, community members, skaters, and getting something that everybody likes. So, I think that's really exciting, and Patty.
I emailed them today.
Good, good.
When is the Verizon Tower?
I actually talked to Mike, I can't remember his last name off the top of my head today, and they are still waiting on their county permit. They had, county had sent them a couple of things that they needed them to revise or provide additional documents on. So, as soon as they get those permits, they're going to be starting work.
It seems, it seems to me that, I mean, have you thought about, I, I don't anticipate that the Verizon project is going to disturb the skate park, but it, is it, so it's even just the site work and getting the site ready, you don't anticipate that there would be any?
I wouldn't think so, because I think there's enough distance between the two of them. It's going to be a very small construction site for the tower.
Right.
I don't think that it's going to be, I mean, they're just going to clear a patch of ground, they're going to put a fence up, and then they're going to assemble a tower in the middle of it.
No, they're building a building.
Oh, they're building a building.
There's, there's going to be a, a maintenance accessory building. That's the part that's going to be, if it was just a tower, it would be great, because it's also the flag tower, so it's also a really small tower. It's a flagpole. But no, they're building an accessory building. That's the construction project.
Jason didn't seem to think that it would bother it, but I will, I will check on it.
You can check on whether that's a prefab building. A lot of those, they bring in as, like, on a truck as a unit and set it on a foundation, so it may not be building a building in the way we often think of it.
But yeah, to summarize, I mean, I think the skate park project has been another great community collaboration, and I think we're going to end up with something that everybody's going to really like. And then, we also had a short presentation from Matthew Kirk about Thought Bubble, and he's going to be coming to our meeting on the eighth, fourth?
Fourth.
The fourth, yeah. And I, I just want to put out there that commission members were definitely interested because, as Matthew described it, it sort of opens the funnel of ideas, and we'll get to see how it works a little bit, but we won't move forward until council feels good about that as a tool. And then, with Community Access Panel, I think one thing that I'm really excited about is we're going to focus on our mission, which is to best serve the community via Channel Five, and so we're planning to do a citizen survey to see what we can do, how people use it, what we might be able to offer that would be better. And the other thing is, within the scope of CAP, is other items that might be related. And so, I suggested that the Springsnet Group that was talking about municipal broadband could work with the Community Access Panel to sort of talk about where that project's going to go. They did not get their grant, but they still want to work on that initiative, and it seems relevant to tie that to Channel Five because of all the things we're doing with, you know, putting our meetings online and where we want to go with that. So, so that, they're going to come actually to the meeting on Wednesday, and I think that's a good way to bring information to council to see where that might go for the community.
Okay, Mary Ann?
The Energy Board met and had a presentation by the Superintendent of Water at St. Paris, Ohio, on solar array that they have put up there. I forget how long it's been there, that is providing the most of the electricity for their water plant, for their water supply plant, not the treatment plant, the supply plant. And I think at this point, he figures that they're saving about 30% on the cost of electricity by using the solar array. They did get some kind of, I don't know if it was a grant, they did get some kind of money to help put this up, but he was very positive about it and talked at length about how it gets used, that they fill up, they use it, the sun is creating the energy during the day, so they use it during the day to pump the water up into the towers. Whereas normally, I guess that tends to be done at night by when it's not, when it's just off the grid. And it's tied into the grid, so, you know, comes back and forth. So, that was an interesting presentation, and Joe Bates was there. Well, I think Joe actually had, had met this, I forget the man's name, and invited him. And so, it was, I think the Energy Board was very interested in thinking about that and looking at other opportunities to use solar. I know Karen raised the issue of how much electricity can we be generating in-house, so to speak, and the Energy Board has not talked about that. We can talk about that. So, it was a very interesting and productive meeting.
Thank you. The chamber, our, our July meeting was canceled. We do have an August meeting. It's going to be about Constant Contact. We'll have a special speaker who's an expert in Constant Contact come in. That will be the third Thursday in August at, in the morning. Let's see. MVRPC, our July meeting was canceled. There really isn't, there isn't a whole lot going on, although I did just hear that the, that Congress did pass the legislation, the, the road to allow funding of new roads, which, whether you like roads or not, we've got to pay for them, and it was driving people crazy. I mean, we, communities could not, could not commit to spending on roads, so it was very important that they did that. So, I mean, what, what, what planning organizations are all saying is that, is that we've got to come up with a better way to fund highways, because we're, with better mileage in cars, the only way it's generated is through gas tax, and they're generating less gas tax, because it's a good thing, but it doesn't mean that the roads are, the roads are in any better shape, so.
Or reduce less.
Yeah. So, future agenda items, I was going to ask Brian, so if you're, if you're suggesting that the, that the broadband group work with CAP, are you also suggesting that we, we put MAVECA in that? I mean, I, I don't, you know, should we have them come to the next meeting?
MAVECA is a little bit different, because this is more about what's happening in the region, what other communities are doing, and opportunities for collaboration. So, I, I don't think they're, they're yet completely connected.
Okay.
If that makes sense. So, I, I think it would be very interesting for us to hear what MAVECA's involved with, because they've got projects going on in all counties, they've got broadband fiber coming into the village, and so there's lots of opportunities for economic development. So, it's a little bit different from Springsnet.
Let's start, let's start talking about legislation. What, do you know of any legislation that we have coming?
We will have the bid legislation on the building at Sutton Farm. That's the only thing I'm doing.
Have those, the three RFQs you have, are going to need to, are you bringing bids on those, or is it further out?
That, the bids are opening on the end of August, so it's further out.
Okay. So, at this point, so we don't have a lot of legislation. So, the, I mean, so it looks, looking like this, this meeting may be, we have both the Thought Bubble and MAVECA will, it'll be, will have presentations, because at least I know that, that Thought Bubble will have a, a audio, a PowerPoint presentation. So, do we want to do both of those in the same meeting as?
Yeah, as well. It looks like it's going to be a light meal.
Yeah, and I think we should also, I don't know if we normally put time limits on those things, but.
We, 10 minutes.
Okay, 10 minutes?
Yes, so if you're talking, both of those folks, 10 minutes.
Did you want to bring your council chambers up, Greg, Jerry? Did you want to bring the council chambers up, Ray, Jerry?
Uh, no.
We'll be ready.
No, we won't be ready.
Okay.
Do we want to talk about the...
The pesticides? I think we should sometime in August.
I mentioned to Patty that we wanted to talk about it, so...
I saw something that I got online about, I think, Algonquin, Maine, just passed the ban on pesticides, both that the municipality, for the municipality and private use.
I'd like to see the legislation. That would be interesting. I mean, you have to be pretty careful with words, because pesticides include, the chlorine in the pool is a pesticide. It kills microbes, right? The chlorine that we use in the water is a pesticide. It kills microbes. So, how we think, I think we have to think kind of carefully about it, and, so, yeah, I think we should, we need to, we need to do some follow-up.
I'll try and find that reference.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have that discussion, so it looks like we'll have a pretty, pretty light agenda.
And you have the Glass Farms down there, is that about the detention area, or is that a...
Probably, the beavers.
The beavers?
The beavers.
Okay, so...
You want that?
That probably needs to wait until...
Until, yeah, until we get some, some hard figures on the size and that, and as John said, we're meeting tomorrow, and that can be a topic of discussion to follow up on with Jason and get the size down and all, and move forward.
We do have the two pieces of referendum legislation.
Oh, thank you.
And we have to do those at that meeting. Lori actually brought up a great idea via email between myself and her, so it was legal, perfectly legal, that we, in the future, consider canceling the August 4th meeting. That way, we wouldn't have a missing clerk.
First meeting in August.
First meeting in August, yeah, I guess, we wouldn't have a missing clerk if, that gives people the opportunity to kind of have a standing vacation if they, if they want, so...
I think it helps with planning, because also, the village manager will not normally have just come onto the job, we hope, and so, there's a sense that, okay, and then the villagers also know that, okay, that meeting has been canceled from the beginning of the year, so that we're gonna be planning.
In case Richard wants to go on vacation.
We're gonna be planning.
Do this as a regular...
Yeah, just at the beginning of the year, we announce that that meeting will be canceled, because this hap, it's a pretty predictable cycle. We have a, there's a dip this time of year, there's, people are going off on their own vacations, villagers are, and it's helpful to our staff to not, putting together these packets, you can take it for granted, but having to do both the paper packet and the electronic packet and make sure it gets to all the people, it's a lot of work that goes into just getting this meeting.
So, are you saying we won't do it this?
No, oh, we have to have this next year.
We announce our meeting schedule at the beginning of the year. Now, we can always cancel along the way or add meetings along the way, which we inevitably do. I've never had a year where we did not add substantial number of meetings, so I think canceling one from the beginning of the year is just, it's a wise thing to do, and it helps with planning.
Yep.
Great idea.
Okay, no executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor, see if they thought by saying aye.
Aye.